And we'll start with the prayer and the pledge. Welcome to those in the audience, thank you for your patience. We will begin our regular council meeting with a prayer and pledge. So if you'll join with me, please. Gracious Father, we thank you for this opportunity to do about the city of the business of the city. We just thank you for this opportunity. We thank you for all our city workers, all our staff, and especially our public safety workers to keep them safe. We ask you to be with us tonight in your name. Amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Yes, Mayor, thank you. Councilwoman Fitzpatrick.
Here.
Councilwoman Tibbs. Councilwoman Bench.
Present.
Mayor Pro Tem O'Neal. Councilwoman Chlorus.
Present.
Councilwoman Moore. Councilwoman Balls.
Present.
Councilwoman Clark.
Present.
Mayor Browning.
Present.
We have eight members present, one absent.
Thank you. For the audience during our regular council meeting, we ask you to please remain quiet, refrain from speaking, cheering, booing, and anything else. Please, at this time, if you have any electronic devices, would you please turn those off or turn them down at this time so they do not interfere with the council meeting? So double check, we always ask our council members to do the same. Ben Quirk, are there any announcements?
Yes, Mayor, there are. I do have a few. I'd like everyone to be aware that City Hall will be closed in observance of the following holidays: Veterans Day, Tuesday, November 11th, which is tomorrow, and for Thanksgiving holiday, Thursday and Friday, November 27th and the 28th. And also, the Waste Collection Convenience Station is open to city residents the second Saturday of every month, from 10:00 a.m. to 2:00 p.m. City residents may dispose of items such as building materials and recycling for glass, plastic, and paper. The next collection day will be Saturday, December 13th. And also, Mid-Michigan Waste Authority will continue their weekly curbside yard waste collection on the same day as your trash collection through November 30th. Mayor, that's all I have for announcements. That takes us to personal appearances.
Okay, and prior to personal appearances, the speaker is limited to three minutes. The purpose of the personal appearance is to address council. Speaker shall address their remarks to council as a whole. Remarks shall not be addressed to individual council members, city staff, or the audience. Speakers may ask general questions about the topic of their presentation. All questions will be referred to city staff for appropriate follow-up. Speakers shall not ask questions of specific council members. And with that, why don't we call our first?
Yes, our first appearance, our only appearance this evening, is Elizabeth Smith.
Good evening, City Councilwoman. I was here at the last meeting about the 911 call when no police showed up. And I've been calling to check on my glasses were broken, my front tooth is loose, and I want to know, and the ambulance, the ride, and the ambulance, and my medical bills. I don't know where the case is standing, I haven't had a detective, I don't know what's going on. I want to know who's going to pay for that.
Thank you.
You're welcome, thank you.
Mayor, that takes you to remarks of council.
Okay, and council members, remind you that you are limited to five minutes. And tonight, we begin with Councilwoman Clark. Pass. Today. And then Councilwoman Ball.
Thank you. Good evening, citizens, everybody's watching us on TV, and everybody that's here for the City Council meeting today. Let's like to thank the, everybody that's in the city for doing such a fine job of keeping those leaves out of the curbs. I haven't noticed too many people putting them in there. And I did have one neighbor that was putting some on the curb, and I asked him not to, and he stopped. So, I really don't have a lot to say this evening, but just hope everything's going well for everybody, and like to, hope that our city keep doing a good job of doing what they do. So, thank you.
Thank you. Well, Councilwoman, Ben DeMar.
Good evening. First of all, thanks to our public, our personal appearance, individual, I'm sure we're looking into that matter from the last episode when you came in, Ms. Smith. Also, I put on our desk a fundraiser for Restoration Outreach, which is located on Norman Street, which is one of our community block grants. Councilmembers, I've been asked, and the citizens, if we can patronize so that 20% of the sales that day between certain hours will go to help fund them, and so we got the coupons if anybody needs them or wants them. That's all I have to say.
Thank you, Councilwoman. Yes, Councilman?
Oh, thank you.
You may.
I'll be very brief. I want to thank people for coming out and voting, and specifically voting for the renewal of the police and fire issue that we had, which was very, very important. Roughly 7,524 people voted for it. Only 4,077 opted not to. That's a resounding support, and we thank you for doing it. And with that, I'll pass the gavel to you.
Thank you. Mayor Pro Tem.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just like to take this opportunity to, I see Beth London in the audience representing the Streets Department, just want to let you know that a lot of folks who appreciate the activity on Lapeer Street. It looks like they're, I'm not sure, 80%, maybe, I'm not sure. There's a lot of little things, but it looks fantastic. And just the attitudes of the neighbors, because, you know, they were telling me when it was not working right or not fixed, but they're very, very pleased, not only in that area, you hear people talking about it at the barber shop and other places where people frequent in terms of that area, it's very highly traveled. And I just want to say thank you for, you know, making, making that happen, and understand that the springtime, there'll be additional work on, in the area. So, thank you for that, to your, for your whole department. Also, I want to express appreciation for the opportunity, Mr. Mayor, to represent the city at the Women's Progressive, Progressive Club, where there were four individuals honored at that event, Mr. Pearson, Mr. Demona Reed, Mr. Art Smith, and Mr. Charles McNair. And we were there to provide proclamations and acknowledgements for that as well. Also, Saginaw Valley Ford, Mr. Gil Johnson, in conjunction with Saginaw Valley State University, hosted Mr. Earl Clu, who was a jazz guitarist at Saginaw Valley State University. It was a great event, very well attended, and very good for the valley. Well, Saginaw Valley, or the Great Lakes Bay region, I shouldn't want to say, but Saginaw Valley Ford, Lincoln, and Saginaw Valley State University hosted it, and the city was able to provide a, sort of a welcome proclamation to him on behalf of the city, and I was able to present that to him as well, and it was very well received. So, with that, that concludes my comments at this time. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilwoman Nancy Bench.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just want to echo Councilwoman Chlorus's comments, and thank everyone, especially the citizens and our neighborhood groups, for turning out to support the Public Safety Millage. There are a lot of people who put a lot of work into that to make it successful, and I also want to thank Councilwoman Chlorus, who put a lot of work into it and helped do a great deal of fundraising for us. So, thank you, and that's all I have.
Thank you. Councilwoman Tibbs?
Thank you, Mayor. Thanks, thank you, everyone, for attending today. Ms. Smith, I believe the city is working on your issue. I know we talked briefly about a week ago. I think there is an update. I don't know if you're going to be sticking around after the meeting or not. I believe I have your phone number, I can give you a call and let you know what, where you are with your issue, with the, with the damages you have suffered. I would like to thank the scenic Saginaw Police Department, Michigan State Police, Saginaw County Sheriff's Department, and Saginaw, City of Saginaw Fire Department, and the Neighborhood Association. Although there were, I believe, six structured fires, it was definitely still a significant impact compared to what it was like before we had such a campaign. Thank you for your efforts, and thank you for your contribution, this total volunteer effort, and I thank you for that. I'd like to congratulate some of the 2014 Community Leadership Award recipients, Craig Goslin, Tom Hosbeck, Carol Cottrell, and M.L. Kason Company. All have significant impact and presence to the city, and the city would be definitely a different place if not for their contributions. I'd like to thank the Friends of Hoyt Park and the community volunteers, they're prepping for the ice rink for the Hoyt Park. After a 10-year hiatus in 2012, they began, reignited that tradition. Thank you for your volunteer and your service. I'd like to, like to thank the Saginaw P.D. and their Citizens Academy. It's a seven-week program which just kicked off a few weeks ago. I think the purpose of the academy is to increase the transparency and to develop relationship with, with the kids in the community. From what I've heard, there's been some positive feedback to that. Hopefully, we can continue that and, and maybe even increase it. I guess, I would like to talk about a couple of MLive articles that were published recently. One specifically about Lawrence McKinney, who was recently abducted to the Saginaw County Sports Hall of Fame. Bob Johnson wrote a significant piece about the Saginaw Juvenile Detention Center, and how although these kids do commit adult acts, behind closed doors, they're just kids. And there was a recent article after the Saginaw Arthur Hill and Saginaw High Football Game, in which they interviewed the Saginaw Arthur Hills football coach. And what I took out of those three articles is that all our kids need is a little, a little attention. And I think although we do tackle adult problems, and we do have adult problems here, I think sometimes the kids do get lost in the shuffle. But I believe Arthur Hills Coach and Mr. McKinney had it correct. You know, we just got to sow, sow seeds. And I think that Explore Program, which was discussed a few weeks back, and which we discussed with, and how it could contribute to the city, in short-term, medium-term, and long-term, as far as diversifying the city, as well as having a presence within the middle school, Thompson Middle School. I think that's something that we should continue to look at, and, and put all our, as many eggs as we can in that basket. I can't see how we can go wrong with supporting our kids, and I think it'll benefit our city greatly. And that's all I have currently. Thank you.
Thank you. Ben, Councilwoman Fitzpatrick.
Thank you very much. I too want to thank the community for turning out in such great support for our public safety millage, all, all sectors of the community. And I want to thank Councilwoman Mayor Pro Tem O'Neal for work that you did on that with the African-American community. And I also want to thank Mr. Chlorus for all the work you did all over the place for that, that effort. You're to be commended. Thank you. Today is the 239th anniversary, birthday, I should say, of the Marine Corps, founding of the Marine Corps, 1775. And then tomorrow is Veterans Day, so those are always linked together. We have many, many ex-Marines, former Marines, and current Marines in our city population, and we wish them all the best as they continue a very, very old tradition of protecting us and serving us. For Veterans Day, which started in 1918 with the signing of the armistice, ending World War I, for all the many, many veterans of all the different branches that we have, members of our families that have gone before us, and also for those currently who are young and old alike, who are, are veterans, I often have wondered, you know, other communities have done this, where they've somehow found out who the oldest veteran is in their community. It'd be interesting to find, to find that out, and get somebody going on that. Anyway, congratulations to them, and for the, the work that our staff has been doing towards getting contracts and things set up, and all the work that goes into that, thank you very much. It's much appreciated. Ms. Smith, I believe that we have a memo here that on the 5th, Joe Grig advised you that he's in the process of completing the reports for his investigation, and will be turning it over to a prosecutor for review within the next few weeks. So I think you probably know that. I know you're not happy with the slowness of it. Wheels of justice unfortunately grind real slow, especially when it's us that is, is waiting for an answer. So, I just ask you to be patient, and hopefully, it'll, you'll get some good results there. It's, it's usually not 100% for anybody that they're 100% happy with the, the results, but, you know, this is, this is real, the real world that we live in, so. And I do want to commend all the, all the residents who do such a great job on Halloween with, you know, you know, greeting our young people as they come to do trick-or-treating and all that, and just a wonderful friendly exchange that goes on, and the parents that are out there watching and, and taking care. You're to be commended for that, and, you know, that's, that's all part of the great American spirit and local responsibility that we take, and so, thank you for that. And that concludes my remarks.
Thank you. This is the, the fifth and last week that I have talked at TV5 on Ask the Mayor about public safety. We've had four consecutive weeks, and today, once again, I was very pleased to announce that 65% of the voters approved the public safety renewal. And that speaks very highly of our citizens. Very important, the, all the volunteers who, who worked very hard on that, each, each and everyone in their very own way, whether it was knocking on doors, passing out literatures, having a sign, yard sign, or those that made a financial contribution to make a lot of that happen. I just really want to thank those. I do want to remind our citizens, though, that we are still subject to what we call the Safer Grant. And the Safer Grant is that, a grant that we, I know, is it going to expire? It does affect the, the Fire Department and every effort that we can make to renew it, if it's renewable, we certainly want to do that and get, get work on that. Secondly, as far as the public safety millage past, one of the issues that was addressed, and it will continue to be addressed here, I think, at this council, is the diversity of our public safety officers. I think that's very important. I think we still are going to continue to work on that, to better reflect the overall look of our community here in public safety, and the need for, for that in our community. So, congratulations to our citizens of the City of Saginaw for supporting our public safety efforts. I really appreciate that. Second, little, just thank you to all the council members and city staff who helped Delta College celebrate their Celebration of the Arts, Music, and Humanities. I know several council people were able to make some of the events, and our city manager made some of those events. They're, they're a very big part of our community, and so is the, the Arts, the Music and Humanities, a big part of our community. So, I'm really pleased to be able to have a part in that. And I happened to attend the one at the Saginaw Art Museum, and what a well-done program that was over there, and the excitement. And we're excited to hear the progress that Delta College is making now. Right now, we're, I think we're looking, they're looking at what type of education programs will be best served in this community in Saginaw, so looking forward to that. Also, my last thing, and I'm going to key in on Councilwoman Fitzpatrick. As mayor and, and council members, you know, we're asked to, to, to attend a lot of events throughout the year, and I can't tell you, I had no idea how many I would be asked as mayor to attend throughout the year. A lot of special events. You get a chance to meet and talk to a lot of people, but I think one of the highest honors that I could ever get was recently, and it'll happen tomorrow, I have been selected to give the speech at the Veterans Memorial Plaza tomorrow. And what an honor that is for me, and I don't want to give too much away. So, council members, tomorrow, if you are so inclined, or please available, the 11th hour of the 11th day of the 11th month, we will be at our Memorial Plaza over here. If you have a chance, please come over and join us. If it means taking an early lunch hour, please come over and join us. We'd like to recognize all of our veterans and their families on this very special Veterans Day, and I'm very honored to, to be asked for that, and so, I'm looking forward to this tomorrow, so it's a special event. With that, Madam Clerk, let's move on to our next business.
Next item of business is reports from the manager.
Okay. Well, a few of the items have already been mentioned, but I also wanted to say that our city staff members, inspections department, fire department, police department, as well as the volunteers, did, did do a great job with arson watch this year, and I think they've, our staff along with the neighborhood groups have done such a good job, it doesn't seem like it's as big of a story now, so I think they continue to work on that and do a great job organizing it and getting, getting all the volunteers. So, congratulations to those involved. Chief Van Leeu and Mr. Stempel are big drivers behind that, so I know they'll continue to do that in the future. The Delta College Celebration of Art and Music and Humanities was a great event, it was a week-long celebration, and I think that as they continue to do their research on moving into the city, we'll have more opportunities to work with Delta on these types of events. As the mayor said, they're currently looking at programming for their new facility, but they are moving into kind of a next phase as well, although they're still waiting to hear from the state, they're starting to talk about what they would need in a location, inviting specific people to work with them on that. And I wanted to mention that the, one of the events I went to was Dr. Samuel Jones, who I know Councilwoman Clark is very familiar with, but he was a composer, he is a composer, and he was the, with the Saginaw Symphony. And he gave a great talk, he actually composed an obiture for a city about, and it's Saginaw was commissioned by the Saginaw Symphony Women's Association to celebrate the 30th anniversary of the Saginaw Symphony. And it premiered in 1964, so that was really interesting talk, and that is, I believe, on Delta's public, public television station now, so if you want to see that, that's a great opportunity to check it out. I believe they had additional interviews with Dr. Jones, and have also put those on their, their public television station. So, he was very interesting, a lot of history with Saginaw, and incidentally, he wrote the alma mater and the fight song for Delta College as well. So, it's really interesting to hear some of that history, so hopefully, they continue to do those types of activities. Next Tuesday, the 18th, is the Neighborhood Association Action Group Meeting in council chambers. If you have an opportunity to attend that, I know everyone would be welcome. And then there are two items that, that are on tonight's agenda that I wanted to just briefly speak to because I did receive questions or comments about them. Item number five is amendment to Plunkett and Cooney's contract, and they are a legal provider for the city. It's a short, one-page amendment, but this amendment could potentially save the city money in the future, and because it allows a paralegal to do work and sets a rate for that amount. Without that, in there, potentially, it could be a junior attorney doing that at a much higher rate. So, they're intended to have the paralegal do the work and some of the research for us, but that rate was not included in the initial contract. They were charging us that rate, but we wanted to have it added so that it wouldn't be disputed by our insurance carriers at a future date. And also, we're adding in a comment, or an item, that if it's cost more than $500, then it will be approved by the city and its third-party administrator. So, it gives us some checks on that, and also gives us a lower rate. And then, the other item that I received a comment about is the schedule for the council meetings, and the council meeting schedule is item number six. And the way that we put the schedule together is the way that we have traditionally done it, and this was started prior to, I believe, prior to the charter changes, that changed it from stating a council meeting every two weeks to having two a month. So, it was noted by a council member that we are pretty busy in the month of January and early February. We have a meeting on, on this schedule on the 12th of January, the 24th, which is the strategic planning session, Saturday, the 26th, and then the next February 2nd, so you have three meetings in a little over a week's time. Checked with the city attorney, and the meeting on the 26th could be eliminated if the council wishes to do that, because you're required to have two meetings a month. The 12th and the 24th would suffice for the two meetings required by charter. And then, it shouldn't affect our ability to do any business with purchases or other items, because we have a meeting the next Monday on the 2nd. So, when that item comes up, you, you can make that change. I just want to let you know that has been reviewed by legal, and it would be fine to do that, and for an administrative and operational standpoint, it wouldn't, I don't believe would have any impact on our ability to, to do business if you were to decide to do that. So, I wanted to talk about those before we get to them. And then finally, we have all of the police chief interviews scheduled for December 4th and 5th, Thursday and Friday in December. As I mentioned before, we have nine candidates, and three of the nine candidates are minority candidates, and both of our panels are confirmed. Our city panel will be made up of Chief Van Leeu, Fire Chief, Chief Inspector John Stempel, Director of Water and Wastewater Treatment, Kim Mason, Lieutenant Dave Simon from Michigan State Police, and a member of POAM, who's, I believe it's a detective that they've selected, and a member of COAM who is a sergeant that they've selected. And then a human resources representative, which I believe will be Dennis Jordan on that committee. The community panel will The community panel will be Ms. Leola Wilson from the NAACP, Pastor Robert Davis, who is the Chair of the CAC and a pastor in our community, Bob Vandevener from the Chamber of Commerce, Carol Cutrell, who is representing our, I believe it's our city's largest employer right now, Covenant Medical Center, Gilbert Guerrero, who is a part of the Mexican-American Council, and then finally Walt Reynolds, who is a retired FBI agent, used to be in charge of the Saginaw Office of the FBI and then was the ASEC in charge of Detroit Office. So, he brings that pretty wide range of experience to that committee as well. So, all of the interviews are scheduled and everyone that we asked to be interviewed is accepted. If we have any changes, I'll update at the next council meeting. And that concludes my report. We do have one presentation and that is Ms. Jones is going to...
I guess I was looking at our packet that we received by email and the packet here. Wasn't an item as far as the discussion about the bridge over at Arthur Eddy and...
Is that on there?
That's one, okay.
Okay. Okay, this is item 10.
Okay, all right.
Okay, yeah, the key sentence, yeah. Yeah, it's on the agenda, yes.
Follow-up on number five, I appreciate the input. Do we know the paralegal rate?
$80.
Okay.
Yep, it's listed as $80 per hour. And the attorney rate is not to exceed 150. So, where we get savings, I guess, is if you were assigning another attorney to do the research rather than a paralegal, they could charge up to 150. So, potentially quite a bit of savings there.
Okay, that's...
Councilman Ball.
The last one, number nine. I was just curious to know, you know, do you normally appoint people to indefinite terms? I mean, I'm just curious, why indefinite?
That's a city employee position and it's actually, that's a city manager appointment. So, the city manager appointments, if it's a city employee, is typically an indefinite period. They can be...
As long as they're hired, huh?
Yes, yes. And as long as they continue to go to the meetings, they can be, they could be removed by city manager at any time.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, for the presentation...
Okay, we have Ms. Jones prepares a monthly budget projection and her and I go over that and her staff as well as our controller. So, Councilman Moore asked about this previously, so we're going to be including the quarterly one, the quarterly projection in packets going forward. So, I've asked Ms. Jones to go over the initial time so that you have a good idea of what you're looking at.
... Council members, as the city manager has indicated, the Office of Management and Budget completes a budget-to-actual report on a monthly basis. This report is normally one month behind or in the rears, so the information that you're receiving now is the most up-to-date information that we have thus far in the year. As we are completing the budget-to-actual report, the Office of Management and Budget also runs expenditure-over-budget report because we follow the Uniform Budgeting and Counting Act that requires that we don't deficit spend. So, this report is ran and then department heads are notified of any deficits that they might have and then we complete transfers on that. And as the city manager has indicated, we will be providing to you these quarterly, similar to the budget adjustments that we provide quarterly. And as you know, this current year, we've gone to a monthly budget adjustment coming to council. So, again, in your packet, you receive the budget-to-actual report for the month of September. And I'm going to walk you through how to read this report because at times numbers can be slightly confusing if you're not a number person. So, if you look up at the left-hand corner of your document on page one outside of the cover letter, but page one, you will see that we list out the period in which we're looking at. So, this period three, and that would encompass all the activities that have occurred from July 1 through September 30. And again, you can see the date in which we've completed it. We should be with revenues and expenditures at 25.21% expended or revenues received, but as you know, sometimes revenues and expenses don't happen just monthly.
Let me, up on the top here, it says period of three months report. Is that correct?
Yes.
And that says 9/1 of 2014 to 9/30 of 2014. So, that's just September?
That's through September. So, it already includes July, August and September. So, that's the latest period completed. So, all the activity from July 1 through September 30.
Okay, even though September is not listed on here, that it is implied?
Yes, it is implied, yes.
Thank you, I'm sorry. Go ahead.
So, as you know, that revenues and expenditures don't just happen like monthly. Some of them are, they occur monthly, some of them occur quarterly, some may occur twice a year. So, this report will reflect the changes that have occurred up until September 30. The first column that you're looking at will give you the fund and similar to the way that the budget is set up, the general fund is broken out in detail so that you can see what you're receiving for state share revenue, what you're receiving for city income tax. Going forward into the funding structure, similar to the budget document itself, we go by funds itself. So, underneath the general fund, you'll see major streets and the number because a lot of times I speak in numbers, so I list the number next to it, and then the local street and so on until we get to the end of the budget. Column two, it says 2015 approved budget. That is what you approved back in May. The third column is your adjusted budget. So, so far this year, I've provided to you two adjustments on changes that have occurred in the month of July and August. And we have an adjustment for September on this meeting tonight. Yes.
Yes, I'm sorry, Councilman Clark.
I note that there's nothing that denotes a change in September necessarily. Would it be possible on these to simply highlight in a different color?
We could.
I think it'd be easier for all of us. Then we'd be able to see what was actually changed in this proposed or in this budget adjustment.
Well, this, here's the report, but yes, I can highlight it for you. So, like if you look at the general fund, you'll see that the general fund revenues that you approved was 31.4 million.
Right.
Then the adjusted budget shows 31.9, so that shows the change, but I can highlight it for you.
Well, the reason, I'm looking at the individual line items, and the reason is, short of going through every single line item, if, for example, I mean, look, we have a change under other revenues and we have one under use of fund equities. We have to search through all of these until we find it. If actually you simply highlighted the number of 285, 627, which is the change number, it'd be very quick, very easy for us to find the changes and we wouldn't be searching through every single line item.
I can do that.
I would appreciate it. I think it would be helpful to everybody.
Is council in agreement with that?
Yes.
Okay.
Thank you.
The fourth column is your year-to-date activity. So, again, like I said, it's from July 1 through September 30. Every, all the revenues that you've collected and what you've expended. The percent of adjusted budget is just comparing what you've spent to what the adjusted budget is. And then the final column, your 2015 available balance, this is what either you have to spend or what you need to collect. So, when I'm looking at your general fund, I notice that your general fund revenues is at 22%. That is 3% less than where you should be at at this point in the year. Remember, we should be at 25%. It's 2% less. And that's only indicated that we haven't collected all of our revenues. Again, the months of August and July, we're doing adjustments to the budget to move transactions that should have occurred in 14, back into 14. So, these numbers will be slightly less than the lapse per year, which is 25%. On the expenditure side, you're seeing that, I broke that down by the department. So, like if you want to look at general government, which would be the city manager's office and the city attorney's office, you can look at fiscal services. The activities that has occurred in these departments in the general fund so far up to this point in the year, we're at 24%. The largest increase, it looks like, is your other general fund, so that is in your retiree healthcare costs. So, there may be a transaction that needs to go back to 2014 that's still showing in 2015. So, overall, when I compare your general fund, yes, you're slightly less than the average, but you're still within range. If there was an issue, again, I would bring forward a budget adjustment or require an action plan to take care of the changes if there's too large of a change for revenues and expense. Any questions with regards to the general fund? And what I'm going to do is I'm going to walk through the report, but I'm not going to hit every single fund. I'm just going to hit the funds that I think are important. If you have a fund that you want to discuss, I can, we can talk about it. The other major fund to look at is your street funds. So, you have your major streets, which is your 202. And what you're going to notice immediately is that revenues are at 8%. Well, the first payment that comes into this fund doesn't incur until October and this report is through September. That is going to be the same for the local street fund where they're at 7%. But again, both funds are less, and when you look at the expenses, is less than the average lapse per year. The Public Safety Marriage Fund, the 205 fund, your revenues are at 20% and your expenses are at 19%. We received our first allotment of money for our taxes, so that's showing up in your revenues. Rubbish Collection Fund, we issued the bills in August. Citizens have up till November 15 to pay their household rubbish fees. So, again, this is only showing other revenues that you've collected, like sale of junk, the monies that you collect on the compost Any questions on page one? Page two, again, I'm not going to go through all of them, but I want to point out the Clean Energy Coalition 230 Fund. The revenues that come to that fund is actually an operating transfer from the general fund. That will not occur until the end of the year. So, and right now, there's nobody, there was a person allocated to this fund by 10% and that position's currently vacant. So, the only thing that's listed for expenses is a payment on an installment payment. The Anderson Enrichment Center is the first budget adjustment I brought to you in July. In July, we end up splitting out the Anderson Center operations and the Art Enrichment Commission. So, again, you can see here where we did the budget adjustment to split to two funds. And the revenues, they're still trickling in for the Anderson Center. So, we're going to be meeting with them. We're going to catch up on, find out what happens to some of the revenues. So, we're not concerned about it. It's at 33%. Most of their activities occur in the summer and springtimes for marriages and stuff like that, but we're on top of the revenues there. Any questions on page two? Page three, community policing, that's always been an issue area to talk about. Revenues right now at 11%. We have a reoccurring general entry for the CDBG allocation to the fund. Water Fund and General Fund also provides a subsidy. That will be handled at the end of the year, so you're going to see that revenues are always going to be slightly less than the expenses. The expenses are slightly, at 26%. There's one-time activity that shot it over the average, but it's doing rather well, the fund itself. Police training, yes, we spent $545. That's a reimbursing fund, so we're waiting for the reimbursement back on that one. The Saginaw TAPS Grant, this one has been expended. The grant ended actually September 30th, so we received the revenues and the expenses are done. Normally, this grant is like automatically renewal, so you should be receiving something in the near future saying that we get the grant again, so. Homeland Safer Grant, this is a grant that we, the mayor was just talking about. This is a reimbursing grant. OMB just completed the drawdown with the fire department, so we will see the revenues coming in to offset the expenses on the Safer Grant.
Question, question, question?
Yes.
That spiked it. What was that one-time activity?
I can tell you real quick. I think it was like parts and supplies. They end up ordering something for parts and supplies.
Okay. So, it spiked this off, 26%, was it?
That was the 260 Fund?
Yes.
Okay, so you have personnel costs already allocated there and then they ordered a part and supply equipment. So, you're within range.
Oh, okay.
I don't have the specific item that they purchased.
That's fine, thank you. Drug forfeiture fund.
Okay.
The expenditures, what did we spend expenditures for out of that fund for?
Those were operating services expenses. So, we had some, we had some witness fee or witness costs. We had to bring someone here from another state so, for a case and that was the part of the expense. And then you had some parts and supplies.
Okay. Well, I guess I wanted to ask the city manager, maybe he can look at, maybe we can start sponsoring some cadets, sending people to the academy out of this drug forfeiture fund. I mean, it seemed like it's logical to, if we get money from criminals, let's use the money to give more police for the community.
... Allowed to use drug forfeiture funds for the purposes of combating drug crime.
I think cadets would do that if they got the police job.
Yeah, it has to be more specific. The state monitors that quite fervently, so it allows you to buy things like drug testing kits, different things like that that you can specifically tie. You could send a cadet to the police academy and he might be assigned to traffic and not work a drug case. So, it can pay for training for drug enforcement. It can pay for drug enforcement details, things like that. And I'm not speaking just from talking to the chief. I used to monitor that account for my previous employer. So, I, you have to report everything to the state and it's very, they're very strict. If you started doing, they do allow you some leeway, but they won't let you get into more of a general fund-type spending with these dollars. So, it is, it is, it is pretty strict. Somewhat more relaxed than it used to be, but still is, they're pretty strict with it.
Okay. Well, Saginaw is a hard hit, is hard hit with drugs and crime. I was looking at the report today and I think we're number six or five in the country, in the whole country per 1,000 people. And I was wondering if you get special privileges, just if you have those type of issues just happening, you know, in your area?
They don't typically change any of the restrictions based on the crime. You know, we can sometimes call the state of Michigan and kind of talk our way through spending the funds. I know we've been, you know, taken some... I know we've, we've been, you know, taken some, some strengths to buy different equipment. I think at one time, we might have bought some taser equipment with it that might not be exactly what in line with, but as you say, we can, we have a lot of drug crimes, so we can, can tie it back better than other communities, so they, they give you a little bit of leeway in that. They're really looking for...
Could you do me a favor?
Sure.
Could you get them to tell you no?
I...
You know what I'm saying? I mean, let's try.
Well, we better try before we do it.
Okay.
Yes, exactly. We don't want to just do it and then, and then go back.
I appreciate that, let me get back to it some more.
We'll, we can inquire about it, and you definitely would want to ask before you did it, because I believe there's maybe some pretty strong consequences for doing something.
Thank you.
Yep.
Okay.
Sorry.
Moving on to page four. What you'll notice is that when you look at your CDBG funds, that the revenues are less than the expenditures. That's just basically because we're still in the process of doing drawdowns, so we're in the process of catching up and recognizing these expenses. Neighborhood stabilization fund, you can see that there was no budget, so I will be bringing a budget adjustment forward to cover the revenues and expenses. At the end of the year, we were, we believe that all the expenses had been completed for this fund, to come to find out that they still had two houses to sell. So that happened in 2015, when we were building the budget, that wasn't an issue. So now, we're going to do a budget adjustment with our next month's budget adjustment to cover those revenues and expenses.
289, and the celebrity, when it talks about auto theft prevention expenditures, what is that about?
Okay, we have one individual who's allocated to this fund, who does the auto theft prevention for the city. The revenues are less than the expenditures, because first, we get a general fund transfer to offset the grant, and the grant funds have not come in yet. That normally happens towards the end of the year, so.
So it's for salary?
Yes, salary and benefits for one individual.
Okay. And on the celebrity part?
Celebration part.
Celebration, I'm sorry.
Um, yes, this, predominantly, the activities for this fund is for the operation of the celebration park during June and July, so, yes. And it normally kicks up around May, June of next year. Grant dollars are there for the DNR Boulder Grant, it hasn't been expended yet, and we also receive an operating transfer in from the general fund, the water fund, GIS fund, and the IS fund. That will not occur until, until, towards the end of the year. On page five, the top two are your enterprise funds, water and sewer. Both of them are within range. Sewer is slightly higher, but still less than the average. We had a debt payment that we recently made, so that's showing in this report. And water is, the revenues are coming in. We've had some additional revenues that we're recognizing in the budget adjustment, so both of them are within range. One to point out that has been a question in the past is your unfunded liability fund. The expenses don't normally occur until the end of the year, and the revenues is at a deficit or negative status. That's because we had a loss on investments. Each month, we have to look at these, this fund plus the police and fire pension fund and to see how has the market affected the fund. So the unfunded liabilities will fluctuate from month to month. Finally, on page six, the first one you're probably looking at is your self-insurance fund. The revenues coming in is done on a reoccurring general entry, so all, anybody who has general liability insurance in the funds for their equipment, they pay into this fund. We also, for the expenses, we've already had our first payment. There's two payments that occur for general liability, one in July and one in February. We had our first payment completed in July. The Forest Lawn Cemeteries and Oakwood Cemeteries, these are endowment funds. You're not going to see any activity until the end of the year, after we've collected all the revenue in the general fund for cemeteries, then we allocate a portion to these endowment funds. And finally, your police and fire pension fund, again, the revenues are at $90,000 or 1 percent. Well, we had a loss on investment of $2.7 million at the end of the July. Again, it goes with the market, so it's going to fluctuate each month. The expenses that are incurred in this fund will be your custodial fees and a payment to your retirees. So that's the budget report. Any questions?
Councilmember, Councilmember Tibbs.
I know you asked us about page, I think that was three or four, about, about the TARP fund. I know we've been updated over the course of the last six months, we're ahead of schedule, we're doing a lot better than most communities in a similar situation. And I was just wondering, is that where 41 percent, is that reading that correctly, is about what was spent or what was budgeted for, for the year?
Well, looking at the TARP grant, the expenditures are at 56 percent. Yes, that's what's been spent so far. If, if we get more monies in, we'll adjust the budget. If we spend more, we're going to adjust the budget. But we're at 56 percent expense-wise and 59 percent revenue-wise.
So how that, does that work is, is that the money, the federal funds are not given to us from the beginning?
This is a reimbursing grant.
Reimbursement?
Most of the federal grants are reimbursement grants, so they require us to, you have to spend the dollars within, and then be reimbursed, or alternatively, you can, I think, do drawdowns five days prior to expenditures, but typically, we'll expend the funds and then put the drawdown in following that.
And the TARP grant is an 18-month grant, so it should, would be up in April, so we're, we're working through it quickly and trying to get as much spent and completed.
Yeah, I guess that's what I was getting at, as far as, I know we were, we could spend, or we were given a certain dollar amount, and I guess I was trying to figure out, doing the math in my head, were we close to getting to what we were awarded?
I think we're, we're still, I think, ahead of other communities in our spending. For the expenses through this, this period, you might not see any, because I think we had a delay towards the end of summer on doing some of the demos, so you'll probably see a spike in the next two periods in expanded funds. Right, John?
Yes. Good evening. The portion that shows up in the city's budget also is, it's a very small portion, you see it's 130,000. The only thing that shows up in the city's side is the administrative portion of the budget. And the reason you're seeing the, the higher percentage is as far as the spending goes, if you remember right, when the grass started growing, we, we put a great deal of effort into getting those weeds and grass under control, and lawnmowers were purchased to help Phil Carwatt's office to get the, get the grass cut, to update that equipment, and also to put some people to work in, in cutting that grass. So that's where those expenditures occurred and why that percentage is, is higher than the 25.7 percent that Yolanda indicated where we should be. So that's why you'll, you'll see that higher number there.
I was just going to ask, the, as far as our, the Clover project that was discussed previously, would that expenditure come from the TARP fund, or would that come from another fund?
The Clover, that is another, that's completely separate, that's on the land bank side. They actually spend those funds.
But it could be part of that project. Depends on which, if the house is torn down through the grant, then they can expend the funds on that, on that lot. We'll be giving, the, the mayor and Mayor Pro Tem have had an update on that project, so maybe in the next few meetings, we can do the, the same update we gave to them for council, so we'll make a note to, to do that before the end of the year.
Thank you.
Okay, any other questions? Mayor Pro Tem?
Thanks, Mr. Mayor. Just a question. Not sure if you can answer it now, but under the, page five, under funded liabilities, have we, have we utilized any additional debt benefit funds for that? I know we did one some time ago. Have we utilized any additional funds from AXA on, on this?
No, not on this, no.
Okay. I know we did before.
Excuse me?
We did. Did we utilize some funds before for this? Okay, okay, okay. Okay. And then, second question, may I, Mr. Mayor?
Go ahead.
Under the page four, auto theft prevention fund.
Mm-hmm.
Can you kind of describe that a little bit more for me in terms of what that position does?
Well, I'll have the chief come up here, and he can explain it.
Okay. Thank you.
Yes, the position's called SCAT. It's Auto Theft Unit, and we have, it's sort of a coalition between ourselves and Saginaw Township. They have one officer in the unit, and we have one officer in the unit. They're housed at the Saginaw Police Department, and they handle all the stolen vehicles in Saginaw County. And it's actually a pretty good benefit for us, because we get the use of the township detective to investigate our cases also. And I'll be honest with you, about 90 percent of the stolen vehicles are done within the city of Saginaw.
And then, may I, Mr. Mayor?
Yep, well, yeah.
With that being the case, what's our return, what's our percentage in terms of solving or?
Solvability, I wouldn't have the exact solvability on them. We generally find the vast majority of the vehicles that are stolen within a certain period of time. Some disappear and you never see again.
Yeah, I understand.
But the majority of them, we do find.
Be interesting to, to some point in time, get some of that data to, you know, because this is a budget item, and obviously, we want, we want that follow-up on those situations.
Sure.
Yes, we do.
I can get you the stats on that.
Yeah, and it'd be interesting just to see the, the return on the, on the value for what we're, we're expending for that, so. That's, those are all the questions I had.
Chief, I have a quick question.
Yes, sir.
The Porsche that they just pulled out of the river that's been in there many years ago, was that one of those stolen vehicles that finally showed up?
I, I'll be straight up honest with you, I haven't found out, I was so busy today.
Okay, okay.
I will check on that one, though, let you know.
I know, we pulled one out, and it's been in there many years.
Yeah, been there for a long time.
That's one of those unsolved ones, so that was interesting.
Thank you, sir.
So, okay.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Councilmembers? Yolanda, thank you very much. She has always a wonderful job with this and good explanation. Thank you very much. Mr. Manager, back to you.
Thank you, Yolanda, and I'll assure you, it goes into quite a bit of detail when she does those reports. There's, there's a lot that goes into doing the budget projections, and it's something that when I was finance director, Yolanda and I worked on refining, so we do a pretty in-depth projections and forecasting, and it's important to note when you, when you see this, that the percentages are, are good guide, but it's, we don't always, some of the revenues are very cyclical when we get them, so it doesn't always match up, but we're always reviewing where we are with it and when we're expecting revenues, and sometimes you also might see 100 percent of an item expended in period three, but that's because that's when that expense is, and it doesn't occur in the, till the next year again. So there's some, sometimes it doesn't always look exactly falling with the period, but it's always close, and they do a good job of, of monitoring it all. So that concludes the management update for this evening.
Thank you.
Mayor, your next item on the agenda is the consent agenda.
And I'd like to announce that the agenda has been available at City Hall on the city's website and on SGTV, that's cable channel 191. So with that, I need a motion to adopt the consent agenda items, leaving room for exceptions.
It's been moved and supported. Are there any exceptions?
Councilman Cloris, item number six. Councilman Clark, for six, Councilman Clark. Let me, let me, I'm, I'm trying to catch up, people are just hollering, so hang on a second. Councilman Fitzpatrick, you have item number seven, okay? Councilwoman Moore, item number four. Any other, any other? Councilman Tibbs, item number 10. Is there any additional, any additional? For the remainder, all in favor signify by aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries.
Our first exception is item number four, approve the professional services agreement with Plant and Moran, PLLC, to provide controller services for three years at a cost per year of $235,000 for 2015 and $240,000 for 2016 and 2017. That was Councilwoman Moore.
I guess I'm, I'm concerned, because it went up five, it went up. The other thing is this, can you tell me what Plant Moran really actually do? I mean, I, I've seen reports that they rope, but we don't follow them, so why do we have them? They make suggestions to us, right?
Consulting study?
Right.
That we had done?
Right.
This is completely different. Plant Moran is our entire accounting division.
And so they do?
All of the city's accounting. Prepare for audit, close the monthly books, bank reconciliations.
Okay, so.
We used to have budgeted for employees in that division in fiscal services, so our estimated cost for this time for the four employees would probably be in excess of $300,000. Prior to Plant Moran coming in, we did not get our audits done on time. One audit was, I believe, eight months late, and one was six months late. That's before I got here. Just mention that part, too. And the last audit that we had, that was done prior to Plant Moran, six months late, eight months late, and we paid about, to have the audit done with book closing fees as well as additional help in the controller's office, we probably paid somewhere in the range of $140,000 for the audit. Last year, we paid $49,000 for the audit. So we're getting a lot of savings from having it done right. I would also mention that prior to Plant Moran coming, the bank reconciliations for the city were in a minimum six months behind, and currently, they're done within 10 days of the close of a month. So it's hard to be able to manage your money if you don't know how much you have, so that's, that's one of the biggest positives right there, I think, is getting the bank reconciliations done, getting the months closed out, and getting your audits done that late is a big red flag to the state of Michigan. And I say late, the, the state of Michigan is the one who sets the due dates for the audits. Audits are due six months after the close of your fiscal year, so the city at that time was, was violating the state rules for submitting the audits.
Okay. No, that's it. I just wanted to know the difference. Thank you.
I wanted to comment on number four, if I may. Oh, I can wait for discussion, I suppose, but sorry. I think there was only one on number four? So make a motion to approve number four, is that correct? It's been moved and supported. Is there any discussion on the motion? Councilman Clark?
Yes, thank you. The only reason I want to have some discussion, I want to be very careful that we don't talk about the city's finance department being in disarray forever, because they have not been. For many, many years, the finance department won awards every single year for having the audit on time for the excellence of the audit, but they had a controller that was there But they had a controller that was there for 30 years before he retired around the year 2000, I think it was. And it was after that that the troubles began. And they continued for a long time. So, I actually talked to him today, I was curious about this proposal, to see what he thought about the cost. And he thought that financially, just from the point of view of the number of employees it would take to do the job, that, there are only three in the department at that point. And he thought this was reasonable, given the inflation rate that's likely. So, even with that, he thought it was reasonable. But he also commented, because they only had three people, they did have some trouble, even then, keeping the reconciliation current. So, the fact that we were able to do that now with Plant &amp; Moran, to me, was very significant as well. So, I'm certainly going to vote in favor of this, I think it's well worth it. I just don't want to see the whole finance department of the city painted with the same bad brush or the brush that was painted by certain problems we had in the last decade.
We're in that range from, and it was, sometimes when you have a long-term employee that's here that long, they do a big majority of the work and then it's hard to transition. And that's, I think, what happened at the time. And actually, they had to bring that employee back, I think, after retirement to help prepare for the audit a few times.
Right. Councilman Fitzpatrick, discussion?
Subway on that, I mean, ever since, I just want to say, Ms. Moore, that's a question that probably gets asked every year. I've been on council since '07 and it's, which was right in the middle of all that transition that was going on. And Mr. Morales is right, since he's been here, it's been, anyway. But, I would like to ask, now, will we be having the same individuals, like Carl?
We have actually, you know, there's different things that happen throughout. We've had some of our, we've had some long-term people downstairs that have had some pretty serious illnesses. So, it's, we have had a few different people recently because of that. But again, that, you know, that's unavoidable. And then, for some reason, we do have, we have had a few other leaves. But we've had a consistent individual now who's been down there for, I would estimate, the past four years, serving with Plant &amp; Moran. And she'll continue to be, she's actually on maternity leave now, so she'll be back in a few weeks. But to me, that, for such a small office, as Councilman Clark mentioned, at one point, they had three people there. The last budgeted amount, there were four, there was a controller, deputy controller, and two accountants. The nice thing about having a firm like Plant &amp; Moran do this for us is that when something, when a medical emergency happens or a maternity leave, they can send us someone else who has experience to fill that spot. If we had a three-person office, that individual would be gone and we probably couldn't afford to backfill that. So, you would suffer with getting your reconciliations done and, you know, those kind of things could continue to plague us. But they're able to send us people and Plant &amp; Moran is pretty unique in this service that they're providing. They do it in several cities in Michigan. They were brought in even by the state of Michigan to help with the audit in Detroit. They're helping pull the information to send it to the auditors. So, they're pretty experienced in this. So, when we've had instances come up where someone has to leave because of a long-term illness, they'll just send us one of their staff members who's been working in Detroit or Pontiac or one of the other cities. And one thing that we've done in the city too recently that has even made that a little bit easier for us is, as you all know, you switch to enterprise software. And now, the BSNA software that we use is one of the most commonly used softwares in the state of Michigan. So, it's nice because even more of the staff at Plant &amp; Moran know how to use that system and can come in and plug into our office. And they have the ability to, if we, if we're getting down to the close of the fiscal year and we need to have our books closed to get ready for the audit, they can send five people. Or we could have two people or one person here a day. So, it is, it is a very flexible contract and they've always been responsive, responsive when we've needed more.
So, in the interest of continuity, that's not really an issue because our books, our reports, all that, very similar to everything else in the state of Michigan, right?
In the system, and if you know anything about accountants, it's, everything is documented. So, one of the things Plant &amp; Moran first came in and did is documented every process that we need to do, processes that maybe we weren't doing that we need to do. And they have it done by daily, monthly, quarterly, annually. Every item's documented and they've gone through and said, this is how you do it, too. So, they can, they can send someone in and go into that detail and be able to work, do the work for us. But we've been lucky because we have had, I think, as I mentioned, the one has been working in the city for about the past four years. And they've done a good job of getting us people who live in the area, too. So, we have fairly local people that have, you know, don't have to commute up from the Detroit area to work. They live in the area, too. So, that's also beneficial for us.
Good, thank you.
Any other discussion on the motion? Being none, all in favor signify by aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Madam Clerk, next item?
Thank you. It's item number six, is the 2015 city council meeting schedule. That was Councilman Cloris and Councilman Clark.
Councilman Cloris.
As the manager suggested or brought to our attention of the January sequence of meetings, is it proper for me to move adoption of this and so deleting the January 26th meeting? I believe that's the one that you recommended what we deal with?
That is, if you wanted to remove that meeting, we would still fulfill our charter requirement of having two meetings in the month. And if you removed it, it wouldn't, I do not believe it would have an impact on our ability to operate administratively. So, if that's your wish, it would not have a negative impact on us.
And that's the 26th, correct?
Correct.
That would be my suggestion and my...
That's a motion, form of a motion to accept the?
That's my motion to accept the manager's recommendation as presented with the deletion of the January 26th meeting. Is that proper language? Thank you.
And moved and seconded. Is there any discussion on the motion? And I had, yes, let's, who was the other one that had the objection?
Clark.
Councilman Clark.
Thank you, I seconded it, that's all I need to do.
Okay, thank you. Councilwoman Brenda Moore.
I just have a question, so that means we'll have a meeting on the 12th. We'll have strategy planning on that Saturday.
Yes.
Am I looking at it right?
Yes.
And we'll do away with the end of the month.
26th is all I know.
I just want a clarification.
That's okay.
So, on the 24th meeting, we're not going to discuss any city business that day, we're just going to be at the planning meeting, right?
And typically, what council does is suspend the rules and we go into our planning session. If there was something that really needed to be done, you could do it. But you'll have another meeting on February 2nd, which is within a week and a few days. So, I wouldn't anticipate us having any other items on that meeting.
Reason why I ask is, I mean, if it's, the 24th is going to be that meeting, I mean, the public needs to be invited.
Well, it'll be a posted, regular meeting with public appearances, et cetera.
Okay. Because if I'm not mistaken, I don't think that the council got their small stipend on the planning meeting last year, am I right?
You don't get a meeting?
Three? Oh, it's so small, I didn't mean, I didn't know.
You got your big check for that day.
Yeah, we don't.
It's the same size every week.
Okay, all right, okay.
There's no overtime.
Just to make, for clarities, until otherwise changed, there will always be small stipends.
Okay.
And we're all aware of the small stipends that we receive.
Right, thank you.
Thank you. Any other discussion? Being none, all in favor signify by aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Next item is number seven. The renumbering of ordinance 152 Outdoor and Open Burning from section 92.21 to section 92.16 of chapter 92 Fire Protection and Public Safety of the Code of Ordinances. That was Councilman Fitzpatrick.
Yes, it really has more to do with the ordinance itself. I know this has to do with just renumbering, but it has to do with outdoor and open burning. Now, we're talking about fire pits here, right? That's what we're talking about, among other things. I've had a number of questions on this lately from different people around the city because people would, they would like to burn, you know, and some, you know, their logs or whatever, you know, summertime fires and that kind of thing. And at one time, we did have some really good descriptions of the kind of things, there we go. There we go. So, we're set up so that, you know, if, when the fire inspectors come out, you know, there's no surprises, I guess. Go ahead. How do we do it? How's it done? If somebody wants to build a fire pit?
It's spelled out within the ordinance, there are certain things that are prohibited, I'd say. You know, it's supposed to be clean wood, not supposed to burn construction materials, grass, leaves, brush or other things. So, kind of spelled out by exclusion, by the things you can burn. So, it limits it down pretty good.
But can somebody, like, buy a kit? You know, they have those kits out there now, Home Depot, Lowe's, whatever.
Kit tube.
To put a fire pit, you know, an outdoor?
You can buy, you can buy a fire pit, like a chimnea or something like that from the store or you can build your own. The ordinance spells out the dimensions that you can have. And once you build it or buy it, you get to come in, fill out your, or download or come in and get the permit, call the fire department, they'll come out to your house and inspect it. They're going to look at where you're placing it, they're going to look at the device or the pit you've made, they're going to look to see if you've got a fire hose. I know, because I did this already. You know, let's see if you have a fire hose. And then, they'll sign off on it and then you come back and pay your permit fee and they'll put it in the system for you. It's pretty quick and the fire department gets out there within a day or two, I think.
Yeah, we try to accommodate them as soon as, you know, as soon as we get the calls.
So, all the details, like how far it's got to be away and all that sort of thing?
Yeah, there's part, those details are spelled out in the ordinance. And also, the inspection portion, when we come out and do the inspection, if there's anything that's not in line with the ordinance, then we can help you correct that or guide you along the way.
Okay, all right, thank you.
That was the only one, so we're going to need a motion second and then we'll do discussion.
Okay, I move that we approve number seven.
Been moved and supported. Is there any discussion on the motion?
Talk to the fire department first.
Absolutely.
And get the application so that when they discuss the items or the way they want to do it, they don't have it done already and find they've done it wrong.
Yep.
They should always apply for the permit. They'll be told what and where and when and how and so on. They can get their permit and they can do it and be okay.
Yeah, I would say especially if you're going to be building one yourself because if you're doing a semi-permanent one and you put it in the wrong place, you will not get your permit.
Right. A chimnea or these, the small ones you can buy, you know, the, like, portable ones, they're not a problem. I mean, but anything you're installing, they are.
Thank you. Go ahead, Chief, do you have a question or a comment? You're all set? Okay, Eric goes up here, too, I think.
Yeah.
All in favor signify by aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Madam Clerk?
To R.C. Hendrick &amp; Son Incorporated for $13,750 for the recommended repairs to the Cathay Street pedestrian bridge. Councilman Tibbs.
Thank you. Well, one, I just want to commend our liaison committee because there's a lot of issues here as well. Whose responsibility is this? And, you know, they followed up on Judge Thompson's request as well as several members in the Northeast Neighborhood Association that they had about this bridge. I guess my only question is, I guess the offshoot of that this bridge was not necessarily causing a problem, but the fence that is consistently being torn down and where kids or adults in that area would walk through that fence, is that at all attempting to be looked at or being addressed at all?
I think Beth can answer that question, for sure. It's not our fence, so it would either be, belong to the school or the railroad.
It's, the fence is owned by the railroad. They've been told to repair it again and we'll keep following up on that.
Sure. I mean, it's not that difficult to tear down that fence. Have they thought about maybe some, or we suggested some alternative barrier?
What I would mention is, they're probably regulated on what they can do and my guess is they'll do whatever is the most affordable for the railroads. The city members on this, city school liaison committee did ask the questions of the school board members and I believe Ms. Davis forwarded those out to the whole council, the responses. We did have one more question and I don't think we've received a response, but it may have been, I can't remember who, which member asked or if it was Mr. Carwatt, but we asked the schools to make a commitment to and to post a teacher at the bridge to ensure that the students would use the bridge to cross, which would eliminate the, at least during school hours, the need for them, you know, they cut the hole through the fence so they can cross without going over the bridge. So, hopefully, we'll hear back from them and they'll make that commitment. And I'm sure if they, if we don't hear back, I know our city council members on that committee will likely bring it up at the next meeting we have again and make that request to the schools. They've been, I think, very cooperative in working with us on this and they want to make sure that the kids are safe, too. So, I'd hope that they would make that commitment since we're fixing the bridge.
Well, again, I just commend that liaison committee for following through and that was an issue, scary issue. Since we're on that topic, the liaison committee maybe had to order to an extent, but it just came to mind, maybe they can discuss, there were some issues as far as the river development and some property that's along the river, maybe we can delegate that to the liaison committee. Maybe they can assist with that discussion, possibly.
I think we could, I could talk to Councilwoman Bench, who's the chair. And I think the next meeting is at the city, so she could put that on the agenda.
Well, I move to adopt him. I'm sorry, Mayor, for digressing there for a minute.
We were close.
Oh, yeah.
When we started talking riverfront, I was very close. If we have a motion on the floor and we're talking about the motion, I don't mean to be true, but thank you very much.
I'm the new guy, I'm the new guy, Mayor.
Any further discussion? Being none, all in favor signify by aye. We don't discuss without a second. Oh, yeah, we, and he seconded. Motion, we need?
He did make a motion at the end.
Okay, okay.
Okay, good.
Yeah. There's no further discussion? Oh, there is discussion, go ahead.
There's discussion to the manager. Did the Board of Education show any indication of support on this? Did the Board of Education show? Did the Board of Education show any intent of supporting this expenditure?
Supporting it financially?
Yes.
No, the city's paying for that. The city does own the bridge, and we wanna make it safe for the students. This cost is a little bit lower, I think we went out and got three quotes, so it's a little bit lower than we initially anticipated. This is the extent of the repairs that we're gonna do. The study did have, did have some additional, I think, to kinda take the sway out, that would be something another $6,000. The bridge will, once we make these repairs, the bridge will be safe. So we, I believe, I'll call Beth up again, but I believe we're using streets for dollars for this.
Is the city's responsibility entirely? There's another bridge at Wadsworth across the rail yard, and that is owned and maintained by the railroad. This bridge is the city's responsibility, and we are using Act 51 road funds for this expenditure. There's also an additional expense of $1,000 that partially was lower because city streets crews will be applying the non-slip surface coating to the stairs and the landings and the actual bridge itself.
The second part of that question is, does this $13,750 include repairing the fence?
No, no, just the bridge.
That hole in the fence is there for a reason. It's a shortcut. It's dangerous, but it's a shortcut. And we're gonna spend $13,750, and we aren't addressing the other part of the problem, the fact that there's a shortcut hole in the fence, which people will intend to use.
Yes, the fence does not belong to the city, the fence is the railroad. They've been notified that it's broken, so I would anticipate that they would repair it. And as I mentioned, the other thing that we'll, I'm sure, bring up with the liaison committee again is if possibly a school employee could be present to ensure that the children use the bridge and don't cut through the fence.
Do we have any idea whether the railroad would be cooperative or not?
Generally, uh-
The railroad has repaired the fence before. The railroad has repaired the fence before. It's a recurring issue. We're hoping that with putting some stability and some money into that bridge, that pedestrians will be more apt to use it. And once we repair the bridge, it won't be so, they won't be so quick to cut a hole in the fence, or, once we repair the bridge, we're hoping that they won't be so quick to cut the hole in the fence again.
There's gotta be some tough kids going to the school and tear that fence apart.
Adults are putting the hole in the fence.
Adults are doing it.
It's not the kids, yes, yes.
After school.
Thank you.
Any other discussion on the motion? Being none, all in favor, signify by aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Madam Clerk?
Thank you, Mayor. Your next order of business is reports from boards, commissions, and committees.
First, I would ask for any reports from any boards. Any reports from any boards. Mayor Pro Tem O'Neill.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just like to briefly express appreciation for those members who participated in the Michigan Black Caucus event that we held here in Saginaw. I know many of you guys were out of town, though you were out of town.
I know.
Talked to you. And, but it was, it was a great event. We have large numbers as we had several years ago, but Councilman Michael Balls, Councilwoman Moore, and I attended with others. We had great speakers, Mr. Mark Fancher and Mr. Donald Snyder. So the message was talking about planting seeds, you know, inspiring others to do the best in their city and give back, which, you know, we are elected officials and took that charge very seriously. So we hosted well, and we had some good participants, and the outcome was, I thought, was good. Also, just in FYI, I'm a member of another committee in Saginaw. Local elected officials here in town, based on the recent events in our community and nationally, we thought it important to create an opportunity to provide education to our young people as relates to their encounters with law enforcement. So we're gonna create a series of, a series of events whereby education is provided to those young people and their parents as relates to what to do, what not to do. We have some prominent attorneys and some retired professionals who are gonna be a part of this, and the first event is gonna be November 22nd. So I'll bring you more information for your invite, hopefully you can attend. But this will be a series of events geared at educating our youth regarding their interaction with law enforcement. That concludes my comments, Mr. Mayor.
Very nice. I'd like to see that included in the schools in the future, that'd be excellent. Now, any other boards and commission reports? Go ahead.
We met on, we met to discuss on the newly elected committee that the mayor appointed us to. We did have a meeting, and it was all within this period, about the boards and commission. And we really, really was a productive meeting. I think that when it's all said and done, I think that we'll have a better outline of which direction or what we're looking for in terms of candidates. So we had a real good first meeting, the mayor was here. Mayor Pro Tem dropped here for a minute, but it really was a nice meeting. And so we basically discussed one group, well, a couple groups, and we talked about people who had expiring time coming up on boards of commission, and what we were gonna do, because people, terms expire, we don't check it, they keep going. But then we may have a list of people waiting, and so we need to discuss that, on how we're gonna fix that. If your term is expiring, you need to reapply. Don't just assume it's a guarantee.
Thank you. Thank you. Okay, let's move, Madam Clerk, do we have approval of some appointments tonight?
Yes, our first one is approval of city manager appointment of Todd Gregory to the Downtown Development Authority with a term to expire December 31st, 2014.
Need a motion to approve. Been moved and supported, is there any further discussion? Councilman Balls.
His term expires in December 31st of 2014. Why so?
Still need vacancy.
So why we couldn't just update to that plus?
That's when that term ends.
Okay, okay.
An application for a new term. Yeah.
I agree. Any other discussion? Being none, all in favor, signify by aye.
Aye.
For those opposed, motion carries.
The next item is approval of mayoral appointment of Nathan Collison to the Saginaw Riverfront Development Commission with a term to expire April 1st, 2016.
Need a motion to approve. It's been moved and supported, is there any further discussion on this? Being none, all in favor, signify by aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries.
Next item is approval of mayoral appointment of Aaron Bedford to the Saginaw Riverfront Development Commission with a term to expire April 1st, 2018.
Need a motion to approve. It's been moved and supported, is there any discussion on the motion? Being none, all in favor, signify by aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries. Madam Clerk?
Thank you. Approval of mayoral appointment of John Schmody to the Saginaw Riverfront Development Commission with a term to expire April 1st, 2019.
Need a motion to approve. Been moved and supported, is there any discussion on the motion? Being none, all in favor, signify by aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries. Madam Clerk?
Approval of council reappointment of Kim Mason to the Saginaw Midland Water Supply Corporation with a term to expire December 31st, 2020.
Need a motion to approve. It's been moved and supported, is there any further discussion? Councilman Fitzpatrick.
I was going to bring up at the end, but this is a good time for it. I know a number of people in Bay City, Bay City area, who are, who asked me if I knew when they were going to start getting good water from the new project. I was wondering whether or not, was this gonna be changed to the Saginaw Midland Bay City water supply?
No, the Bay City and Bay County are going to be a customer of the Saginaw Midland Water Supply Corporation, so they will not be an owner, they'll simply be a customer. They, and, they had an opportunity, I think, in the 40s to be a founding member, and they did not want to be, so. This project will actually be very beneficial to the city of Saginaw and the city of Midland, the two owners of the corporation, because it's gonna help reduce our costs in the long run. And I think Kim would probably agree that maybe it would be beneficial for the director of the Water Supply Corporation to come and give an update on that particular project to city council, so you all are aware of how that agreement works and how it benefits the two cities that are the owning entities. It's, we do go over that in the meetings, but I think it would be good for that to happen so we can schedule that and have Mike Quinell as the director. We did have, I know the mayor and Councilwoman Caloris had, and Councilman Tibbs, we did go over that somewhat at the, when we had our tour, so, but I know everybody couldn't make it to that. So we'll schedule, we'll try to schedule that within the next few meetings, too, to have Mike here, and perhaps he can even give a short overview of the history of how that corporation came to be founded, so. That's a good point.
Thanks, appreciate it.
Any further discussion? Being none, all in favor, signify by aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries.
The next item is approval of council reappointment of Dean Emerson to the Saginaw Transit Authority Regional Services with a term to expire December 31st, 2017.
Need a motion to approve. It's been moved and supported, is there any further discussion? Being none, all in favor, signify by aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries.
Approval of mayoral appointment of Christopher Sheridan to the Saginaw Economic Development Commission with a term to expire June 30th, 2017.
Need a motion to approve. It's been moved and supported, is there any discussion on the motion? Being none, all in favor, signify by aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries. Madam Clerk?
Approval of mayoral appointment of Tom Darnell to the Board of Building Appeals and Board of Fire Code Appeals with term to expire December 31st, 2016.
Motion to approve. It's been moved and supported, any further discussion? Being none, all, go ahead, Councilman Clark.
Just to point out a clarification, this is talking appointment of two separate boards, correct?
Correct.
Alright. Same date?
Yes.
Are these two, the building appeals and fire code appeals are somewhat related in what they do? Would that be a safe statement?
Yes, very.
How many people are on each of the two boards? Do we know?
There are actually five members that are residents of the city.
On which one, both of them?
On both, yeah, on both of them. They're pretty much the same type of appeals board.
Okay.
One member has to be a fire code of appeals board only, and it has to be from another jurisdiction. That's where the difference is there, and then there's three positions that are employees.
So with the one position the way it is, we really can't combine them to be the same.
Right.
Nothing further.
Any further discussion? Being none, all in favor, signify by aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries.
The final one is to do the announcement of the city manager appointment of Emily Berry to the Riverfront Development Commission for an indefinite term.
And we confirm the mayor, says mayor confirms the acknowledgement, is that right? So that's nothing that we vote on, we just are sharing that information with the council. Thank you for your patience for this, with our new committee, our restructured committee meeting. This should go a lot quickly, we've had to make up a lot of ground here, and so thank you for your patience on that, and certainly we'll be receiving more. I believe that committee meets again-
Next Monday, November 17th.
Monday the 17th. Monday the 17th. The time of the meeting is 10:30 in the morning, here in the council chambers. Okay.
Mayor, your next order of business is resolutions. We do have one this evening, and it's a resolution objecting to the transfer of tax-reverted properties from Saginaw County.
From Saginaw County to-
From the Saginaw County to the city.
To the city, thank you. I need a motion to adopt. It's been moved and supported, is there any discussion on the motion? Uh, Councilman Clark, go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
I'm sorry.
I wanna mention, and I appreciate Mr. Stimple's efforts on this. I previously discussed the issue, and I think council all got a copy of my request or suggestion that what we need to be doing is developing an incentive program for employees and municipalities to move into the city through developing, obtaining or selecting good houses that could be used as a gift, well, not a gift, as an incentive for employees to move in, and Mr. Stimple has been pursuing that, and as advisement, he hopes to be able to talk some more about that first part of the year as the new ones come in, and I think that's appropriate, so I wanna thank him for that. But I do wanna use this moment to say I do not wanna see this prospect die. I think it has to happen. We need to have these incentives, we're losing people too often who move out of the city, and if we can get people to move back in, because we have tools through housing that can be utilized for this purpose, we need to do that. And I'm hoping council will be backing that. And I'm hoping that we can start pushing this much more in the beginning, or the first part of the year, February, March of next year. So part of it is to ask council support in making sure that will happen, through the efforts of the staff making it happen as well. It's in working with the land bank, and Mr. Stimple regularly works with them, and we will need to do our part to make it happen now. It's a program that can't happen by itself, I think is the way to put it. We will have to back it. So with that, that's all, that's all the comment I have on that.
Councilman Balls, go ahead.
We're trying to find out what the intent on this, I mean, what was, what was happening previously, and what we're gonna do by passing this. I wanna know the difference.
The properties- Will revert, all revert to the city, all of the forfeited properties would revert to the city unless you pass this resolution. This is a better way to manage the properties, because if we get them all, we transfer them back to the land bank anyway, and if we don't do that in a timely manner, we get a stack of tax bills like this, because if we're using a piece of property and it's not for public use, then we pay property tax on it. So this is a cleaner way to transfer the properties to the county, or refuse the transfer of the properties from the county to the city. And then if we do decide we want any of the properties, the land bank has been always willing to work with us to transfer any that we would wish to have, if we wanted to, or if we wanted to try to work with them to do some other programs like Councilman Clark talked about.
So what you're saying is that whenever they go delinquent, they automatically just go, we wanna pass an ordinance, but they automatically just go to the county?
Well, you could pass this resolution annually is what's required. So every year, when the total list of properties come up, they want council to pass a resolution. I think we did it last year, probably about the same time. Previous to that, the city, that might have been, I think, the first time that we passed that. Previous to that, all the properties would come to the city, and then John would, John Stimple would get, end up getting that stack of tax bills, and he would then have to go through and- to go through and say which ones he wanted to keep and then we would have to apply to the county or not pay property tax. So this is a much cleaner way to do that, and we started that last year.
I just don't want us to get to a point where if we wanted some property and maybe somebody at the Saginaw County Land Bank knows somebody else who wants the property and then they end up selling it, giving it to the land bank, and then the land bank ended up selling it to somebody else and we miss out on opportunity to make that money for the city. I mean, I'm concerned about that. You know, I mean, there could be some property that the city may want.
It could be, but most of the time when these properties come up, Mr. Stimple and his staff know which ones are coming up, if it's a, if it's a piece of property that is particularly value, valuable property, which generally it's not, because these are ones that have already gone through the tax sale, if it's a real nice piece of property that is worth a lot of money, generally they're sold at the tax, tax sale, so these are properties that no one has basically expressed any interest in.
Okay.
But Mr. Stimple does know what's, what's coming up usually, and if it's a good piece of property, yeah, we'll, we'll get that one.
Okay.
Councilman Clark again.
Is it safe to say that if we wanted to, we could pass this resolution exempting one or two prop, or specific properties? Would that be a possibility if we chose to?
Yep.
So at this point, presumably there's none we want to choose to exempt.
Correct.
Okay.
Councilman Tibbs.
Being new on the board, I didn't know that there was a certain vetting process between properties, because one of the issues that came up as far as the first finding of police force is that, you know, what actually can the city offer to someone outside the area? And there's other, like Flint, they have a housing program to somewhat incentivize employees to either stay in the city or move into the city, but as I said, Councilman Clark pretty much covered what I wanted to ask, was, was there some type of vetting process through these properties to see if that's a program that can, can get off the ground, and I'm glad there is, and that program is being looked into.
Mayor Protem O'Neill.
Councilman Clark, I think that's a great idea, I know St. Mary's House did it some years ago, I think they offered like $15,000 to some residents in that Cathedral District area when they were just building it up, so I think it worked out quite well, and I know there are, you know, it's my hope that individuals would want to take advantage of that. Growing up, you know, we had officers living in our neighborhood, and they were not afraid to live in our neighborhood, you know what I mean, I mean, they were normal people, everybody's not criminals, that live in the neighborhoods in the City of Saginaw, have some nice locations. So, I support you on that and I'm looking forward to the progression of, you know, putting this together and offering that as an incentive, so just wanted to go on record and say that. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
A quick word we had.
You're in discussion, you have motion and support.
Okay, we've been moved and supported, any further discussion? Being none, all in favor, signify by aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Is there any miscellaneous business to come before the council? Councilman Caloris.
I have a question, I was just asked by council person Moore here about the forthcoming parade. Unfortunately, I don't have the date on it, I'd like to throw this out, I don't need an answer today. The float from Mike's record is available, I've been securing that in the past few years and I'd be very happy to do it again, however, unless I get a majority of council people there, I don't want to see a big truck going by with two or three council people on it. So my question is, let's find out what time the date is, we've got, we've got a little time. And we do, let me know whether you're in or you're out, so I know just what to do commitment wise, I know how much candy to get. And unfortunately, at this point, I hadn't given this any thought, but at this point, I don't know what the date is. What is it?
That's the 30th, 37th Annual Christmas Parade.
There we go.
Saturday, November 22nd, 2014, at 11:00 a.m. John Markey will be, of absolute Building Maintenance will be the grand marshal.
No, you have it.
There you go.
11:12:14. Let me know within about a week.
Not for everybody, but...
Let me know within about a week whether you're interested in it or not. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other miscellaneous business? Miscellaneous business, yes.
I wanted to mention briefly, I want to express my appreciation to Chief Van Lu and his fire department for the event, received a great letter of appreciation, I just want to thank you for that regarding the event, so thank you very much, you had a great job. Firefight of the year, great job doing what you do and all the work you've done for the safer grant, very impressive and I really appreciate being there, so thank you, thank you.
Any other unfinished business? Go ahead, Councilman Tibbs.
Still working on attempting to bring forth the proposal to council for the crime-free lease addendum. I guess I'm trying to figure out how to disseminate the information to the council, I mean, I have the information ready, I just don't want to violate any type of open meetings act or anything of that sort, but I have a small packet available and if I can have some direction as to how I can get that or share it with the council.
Refer that to our city attorney, representing a city attorney.
Thank you, sir.
For dissemination to all council members, but not discussion among all council members. You receive it, if you have a particular question, you would like to refer to Councilman Tibbs, I believe that's okay, but we do not discuss it until we bring it to the table.
I'm hoping that we'll have a committee meeting before then.
If you would like to.
We haven't had one in three months.
If you would like to.
Pardon me?
If you would like to.
Well, I'm part of that committee, I'd like to know what's going on.
Okay.
And I think Councilman Clark is on that committee, is he not? We haven't met in three months.
Okay.
I certainly would like to continue being a part of that process.
Sure.
Thank you.
All right. Any other business? Motion to adjourn?
To move.
Move and support, discussion on the adjournment, all in favor, say aye.